All right, I'll call this work session of the Owensboro City Commission to order. And Commissioners, before we get to our business, I think Bill, our city manager, has an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to introduce Lea Ruhlman, who's with us today. Lea is a senior at Apollo High School. She's volunteered to be an intern through the summer with us. She's been here for a couple of weeks now and very helpful in our staff and learning government firsthand on the fourth floor.
That's great, Lea. Welcome to City Hall.
Nice to have you here.
All right, in the first order of business is CBR update. Madison Silver. Madison, you head the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We're always pleased at the Greater Owensboro Economic Development Corporation to get to talk to you about our partnership with the Center for Business and Research and to do that at least on an annual basis. So thanks for having us in to review this with you and the changes that have taken place over the past year. Joe Berry as our Vice President of Entrepreneurship and the Director of the Owensboro Office for the Kentucky Innovation Network will be presenting the update this year. So, Joe?
Thank you, Madison. Mayor Commissioners, happy to be here. Excited to talk about all the great activities happening in the facility and want to echo his comments and extend my gratitude to you all for your ongoing and past support for this exciting project. And we've had a good year. There you can see the building, the entrance to the building. About 47,000 square feet total. Prop, to our knowledge, the only business incubator located in a 110-year-old tobacco warehouse. So that is certainly something that we can boast when we're talking to companies around the state and nation. So the purpose of the facility is to aid in the long-term growth of this community through the development of the next generation of entrepreneurs and to grow and create scalable companies. Scalable companies that can grow and eventually move out of the facility and hopefully employ a lot of people and be a benefit to our economy. Commercialize university research through providing universities and companies the ability to conduct research onsite as well as creating those educational partnerships with both Western Kentucky University and the University of Louisville. Both have a presence in the facility. We also want to concentrate in the facility on high-growth industrial clusters. So we have had companies locate in the facility that are involved in food science, food safety, in quality control, and in plant-made pharmaceuticals. And we provide those companies not only with a competitive advantage of keeping their costs low and being able to share in the equipment that's available to the tenants, but we also try to support them through providing them with the right mentoring, aiding them with their fundraising strategy, coaching, and then also trying to help them connect with partners that can help their business grow. So the primary benefits are not only the resources of the facility itself, but the resources of the Kentucky Innovation Network and that, you know, that's 13 offices around the state with a lot of institutional memory and a lot of connections to help these companies. The spaces are flexible and scalable, so if companies need to, as they grow, they can grow within the facility. The culture is also a bit different than what you would find in your traditional office. It's much more akin to what you would find in a startup environment in Silicon Valley. And that's something that's attractive to companies. And lastly, we try to create that community of support through that proximity to university research. And ideally, we want Owensboro, we want the community to share in the success story of these startup companies, that we can own it and it can be a good story we have to tell. Our key partners in the facility are, of course, the city of Owensboro is our most important partner in that they have agreed to lease the facility from the Malcolm Bryant Corporation, which owns the building and does all of our build-out work at his cost. And then the Economic Development Corporation manages the facility. But we also have partnerships with Western Kentucky University, the University of Louisville. We have reciprocity with Nucleus, the Kentucky Innovation Network, and a very exciting partnership I'm going to talk about in just a moment with the Owensboro Public School System. So before we get into that, I do want to talk about the progress we have made in 2015. We have 12 tenants in the building right now. In this past year, we did see the graduation of three tenants out of the facility. We also began a partnership with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, who are utilizing the space in the evening through a joint relationship with Owensboro Public Schools. We've seen a 50% increase in our build-out in the building, and we are almost at capacity. There's a small space in the research wing, which is currently unfinished and available, but everywhere else is just about under contract. So that's something we're really excited about. And we've also added Becky McCubbins, who many of you all might know from our staff. She's our marketing and incubation manager. She now spends half of her time in the facility to be a liaison with the companies and with the community. A couple of other things to note from this past fiscal year is we saw the successful introduction of ZMAP, which is produced by Kentucky Bioprocessing, made waves in the news for its application to the Ebola outbreak. A lot of that initial development occurred in this facility. Some of that research was done within the walls of the Center for Business and Research. So that's something that we're very proud of. We've also seen some of our client companies submit successful applications to the NIH and the National Science Foundation grant proposals and also launched Co-Starters, which is an educational partnership we have with Brecher University, was launched within the facility. So lots of great things happening this past year. Just to go through some of our companies, like I said, we have 12 tenants. Hollison Technologies, which is a food science and safety company. Adult Immunization Management, which manages immunizations for physicians, hospitals, and large health systems. J&amp;M Shoal, which is an agriculture export company. They're one of our newer tenants. Bright Light Logos, which is a novelty device company. As you can see, many of these companies both have innovative applications as well as being scalable companies that can grow out fairly quickly. Craig O'Brien Graphics, which is a graphic design company. Hemingway Enterprises, which works in the computer networking and cloud management space. Delicious Desserts, which has a retail eatery space within the building, which serves not only our companies but the public. And then we have, WKU has a bio molecular plant biology laboratory in the space. KBP has an analytics arm. They lease a lab from us. Blue Star Consultants, which is a military staffing, human resource consulting firm. Research Concierge, which conducts clinical research management for physicians and other systems. And Axiom Architecture, which is an architecture and design firm, startup company. So these companies in this past fiscal year saw a, created up to 12 new jobs within those companies and saw an influx of private investment, whether that be equity investment, grant funding, and others of in excess of $6 million. And the average salary for these new jobs is around $43,000, which is about 17% higher than the average salary in Owensboro Davis County. So it's not only creating jobs, we're creating good jobs, which is what we want over the long term. So now I want to get into a little bit and briefly mention this partnership with the Owensboro Public Schools. As you know, the Owensboro Public Schools have been looking for a way to create a new technical high school that focuses on educating students in STEM-related fields and in entrepreneurship as well. And they were looking for a home for that facility. And they tried a couple of different options and eventually landed upon the Center for Business and Research as their best option. And they entered into a lease agreement with the city to lease the first level of the facility from Malcolm Bryant. Take that off the city's lease and thereby decrease the cost that the city has to pay to the developer each year and also create that synergy in the building between not only having an educational space, but also in allowing students to have the opportunity to not only receive entrepreneurial education, but to benefit directly from working with these companies, from conducting research. And it really does have a unique mission, and it's going to be the only high school of its type in the state. And this will give you just a few more bullet points here, but it is affiliated with the New Tech Network, and it's certainly going to be, it's going to be a very exciting project. And it's really become something that my counterparts and our colleagues around the state are hoping to replicate in their own communities because it's had such a positive response here in Owensboro. We also, in the past year, have created an advisory committee for the facility that will get together periodically to discuss progress, talk about tenant needs. As we're getting toward capacity, one of the primary discussions is going to be, do we want to institute a graduation rate for the facility? Because many times you have accelerators and incubation programs that have a three-year limit and then the client has to move out. However, most methodology we see suggests that companies are at their most vulnerable when they are growing. So it's important to approach it on a case-by-case basis. So that's going to be one of the purposes of this advisory committee, as well as to discuss, you know, how the facility's evolving, what are the critical needs. And we have a good group of folks that are, have agreed to serve on this committee from the education space, from the entrepreneurial space, philanthropy, as well as building owner and our own staff at the Economic Development Corporation. So now I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Madison, you touched on, or Madison, Joe, touched on one that I was going to ask you about limitation on stay and how long these people can occupy this Center for Business Research. But is there a commitment to them when they come in as far as, like, they get three years, they get five years, or is it just on a year-to-year basis? Going in, what's the commitment?
Yeah, the initial lease is a one-year commitment with six-month renewal period, and the rent increases as the longer the tenants stay. Because the idea is the company's growing, their revenue line is getting higher, so they can absorb more cost. We do try to approach it always on a one-on-one consultation with the company. You know, for example, Hollison Technologies, which has been in the facility since it began, they're, the capital structure of their company was based around being located in the building because they had access to over $2 million of lab equipment that normally they would have to outfit themselves. So being able to have access to that as a tenant, you know, changed their entire dynamic of their company and allowed them to grow at a much faster rate than they would have grown in their own standalone facility. So, you know, what we try to do is really be upfront with the tenant about what these lease periods are and make our commitment to them that we want to help them grow in the best way that we can. And sometimes that means that they have to move out of the facility, and sometimes that means they're going to have to stay longer than maybe they initially anticipated. But we want to keep the eye on, A, protecting the investment of the city of Owensboro and making sure that the building's revenues are stable and simultaneously trying to do what's best for those companies.
The jobs that were created, 12, is that just in 2015?
Correct.
2015. So how many people work in the center right now, you know, roughly?
35 probably total, including some part-time workers that, you know, we have 12 client companies. Many of those are standalone operations. Others have employees that are coming in and out. We have other companies that are just, for example, Kentucky Bioprocessing. Their corporate headquarters are located in the airpark, but they lease a laboratory space from us so they can have access to the lab equipment that we have available. And they have employees coming in and out. So it's hard to tell how many are working in the building at any given time. But I think what you've seen in the last year, Mayor, is that we've seen a lot more activity in the building. Whereas when someone comes to visit, you see more businesses, more folks that are doing business in the facility. And it's becoming more of an open door for the community, I think.
The arrangement we have with the public school system, how long is that for?
What is the, Ed, maybe you can...
Mayor, if I could, the city doesn't have an arrangement with the public school system in a formal sense. What has been done is this building's been divided in half, and the school system has rented the bottom half of this building and the, from Malcolm. And our lease has been amended to shrink the size of our facility down to that first floor minus one little area that the school system's occupying. And that's in perpetuity. The remainder of our lease is the remainder of that initial 15-year term. Now, what we do have between us as a cooperation understanding is how we're going to do things like the outside maintenance, snowplow removal, that type of thing is what we're working with the school system on. So it is an independent program, and they're not subleasing from the city.
You answered my question in concert. All right, I'll start over here. Commissioner Panis, right?
What were the three companies that have moved out and what kind of businesses were they?
Yes, we had, we had three companies that were located in, on the first level, which was entered into a lease agreement between the public schools and Malcolm. So they were Barclay Technologies, which was a startup, a startup firm, as well as Guitar Goods, who was a tenant that had been in the building since its opening, as well as a company called Corporate Design, which had a showroom space but no actual workers in the building. Now all of those leases were going to be terminated because of the arrangement with the school system. But what we did was is we allowed all of our basement tenants the option of moving into available spaces that we had upstairs, which allowed us to increase our build-out. We had two tenants that were in the basement that are now moving to the first floor, that are going to remain in the building. And the others decided on their, after discussions with us, that it was, that they had other opportunities outside of the building. But they were all, you know, all growing out of the building.
But those that have grown outside of the building, are they here in the city somewhere?
Correct. Yes. Yes, they're still here.
Mayor Proten?
Yes, Joe. How many have, how many have left the building and located in Owensboro and have grown? Because it's an incubator, so you start small. The plan is to get them out into the community and expand. Do we have any that have done that here in Owensboro?
We have had, we have had those move out of the facility to move into their own office space, which is often, you know, the first hurdle after they leave the building. We've had four move out of the building, three of that four, one of those no longer is in business, which happens from time to time.
I understand.
But ideally, we, you know, the facility's been open since 2011, or at least the initial, the initial project began. So we're looking at when they will get to the point of growing and adding a sizable workforce. You know, that really varies from company to company. But, you know, ideally, the idea theoretically behind this from a quantitative standpoint is that the companies will have the tools they need to eventually grow out of the building. And once they grow out of the building, that they'll be at a competitive advantage and strategically positioned to create jobs and economic opportunity in the future.
Now, you mentioned Holliston, and you mentioned growth. Growth is in people, growth is in sales, growth is in, how do you mean growth? Because I'm familiar with them. I just want to know a little bit more about them.
Sure, sure. Well, for those, for those in the room that aren't familiar, Hollison is a food science and safety company that developed a technology, patented a technology to measure the air quality around dry food goods. The traditional way of measuring whether dry foods, whether it's dog food, cereal, or contaminated grain, is grab sampling method. You take a method out, you'd send it off to the lab, and you do, and it comes back. Well, the problem is, is that sample may not be representative of the entire, of the entire batch. It's in fact, an outdated way of, that's been around for a long time, but it's very inefficient. Hollison realized that the contaminants that are in dry food goods are usually on the product as opposed to being in the product. So if you measure the air around the product, you're more than likely to get a more, a more lasting result. So they developed a technology that will do that. And they currently have agreements in place with several companies and are on the road to having even more and have had to add new employees to their sales force that are out around, around the country selling their product. What they have done is, they were doing all of their production onsite at the Center for Business and Research. They have since moved that offsite to free up more space for the Innovation Academy. But, and then they moved their headquarters in the facility to a smaller space. So they actually have a smaller group of people working in the building, so they can still have access to the lab equipment and still, and still have their primary corporate headquarters in the building, but have moved some of their operations offsite. So again, that underscores the idea of looking at all this on a company-by-company basis. What do they really need at that time, and then go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner?
I have two questions, Joe. Number one, the total building square footage is how much?
It's right around 47,000 square feet.
Okay, because I have a number in here, 36,937. What's that number?
Yeah, yeah, if you take the, all of the bathroom space, the 37, 36,000 is usable space.
Gotcha. And how much of that is going to be used by the combination of the school system and the current tenants?
If you look, and I just, I just actually switched to that slide. The OIA portion's about 57.4% of the building, which is just over, just north of 21,000 square feet, is going to be used by the city school system.
So we still have a need for another 40, I mean, we still are 42% empty?
No, 42% of the building is what's the city's current obligation for leasing the facility, and that portion is almost entirely full.
So we're almost at capacity?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay. The other question is this. When I think about entrepreneurship and innovation and that sort of thing, I think about a business that has a real need for high-tech, high-technology. How well-fitted is that old building for...
For technology.
...the needs of those potential...
It's very well-equipped. It was, again, a very unorthodox move to put a business incubation facility inside a 110-year-old tobacco warehouse. But one of the things that was apparent at the very beginning was that the renovation, the build-out to the facility was going to have to make state-of-the-art technological capability as well as laboratory space. The reasoning being is that that's what those companies need.
Right.
So, again, there's $2 million of lab equipment that's in the facility. That was funded through a federal grant and with, in cooperation with the city and the fiscal court to bring that equipment in. That's shared equipment. So that's, that's an option for companies that are in the R&amp;D or commercialization space. But the building's equipped with, with very, very fast internet, as well as every tenant, when they come in, it's turnkey. They have the phones on a VoIP system and, as well as having Ethernet right in the, and so they come in, plug in, and they're ready to go. And, you know, also have access to a very nice conference room that we have that has all of the technology bells and whistles. The laboratory area actually has its own HVAC capability that keeps the...
Yeah, that lab is, in and of itself, an anomaly.
That's right.
But I've been in that building before where we had some difficulty getting some Internet access. And I just, and the owner of that property, or the owner of the company said, you know, we have a really hard time in this old building.
Yeah, we have had some, some issues that we've had to address over the course of the building's life with improving. And a lot of that's happened with the growth in the tenants we've had. We've had more tenants, so more of the bandwidth is being utilized. So we've had to evaluate not only who the, look at who's providing those services, but also at how much speed and how much, how much bandwidth we really need. So those are things that we constantly have to be evaluating.
So as that progresses, that's going to get more and more expensive?
Correct. But ideally, we'll have more revenue coming in with more, more tenants in the facility that will be able to offset that cost.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. The relationship you have with U of L's Nucleus Program, can you explain the connection there just a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
I see we've got several partners, WKU and...
Sure. Nucleus is a, is a research and science park affiliated with the University of Louisville. It's in the Haymarket Tiff area of downtown Louisville. Vicky Yates Brown runs that program on behalf of the U of L Foundation. And a couple of years ago, we formed a relationship with them where essentially we agreed that there would be certain kinds of, certain kinds of companies that they had some expertise on helping develop, and we had some expertise on helping theirs develop. So for example, if they had drug discovery companies that were there, we would agree to help advise them. If we had IT companies, they would agree to help advise. And then on top of that, it really worked out great for us. I mean, we don't, in all honesty, it was, it was great outreach for U of L because they offer us way more than we could offer them. And one of the things that they can offer us is the benefits packages that they offer their tenants, it get extended to ours. So there's an opportunity, as our companies grow, to be able to have health insurance, HR support, payroll, all of those kinds of things channeled through the third-party service provider that they have a contract with. So we're able to offer those business supports to our companies as well.
Okay. But they're not tied into any particular company that's currently existent there? They don't have a partnership with any of these, the tenants that are currently in the facility?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. The only other question I have is about the Innovation Academy, your partnership with OPAAS. We're going to be dealing with school kids. How many kids are going to be enrolled in the fall? I know it says small high schools, so I...
Commissioner, there will be, starting this August, 100 kids, starting from, these are students from the Davis County School System, Hancock County, McLean County, and Owensboro. But 100 students to start out with the first year with the idea of scaling up each year with 100 additional students.
I've asked this question even of Nick, but I'd like to hear from you guys, your perspective on it. So your answer may be different, but that is the traffic pattern going in there. Are they going to be bused in? I think the first year they're talking about busing.
That's correct. The first-year students will be, will be bused in. We have ample parking onsite for, for teaching administrative. I mean, the parking lot is rarely, is rarely full. But our agreements with all of our tenants has always been that parking onsite is first come, first served. So, but we feel like we have adequate, adequate parking onsite in the event that students are, but at this point in time, it's going to be strictly, they will go to their home school and will take transportation to the facility for their classes.
Yeah, I mean, I think from a safety standpoint and a traffic standpoint, that would be a better approach. You get 100 kids driving. I remember when I was their age, I wasn't the best driver.
I don't think, I don't think the city schools' plan at any point calls for that. I think it's all, all going to be via transportation from their home school.
Okay. And then the last question is, we're dealing with young people. Do they have, they designed the space, and I'll try and go down and tech or physical, look at this, but have they set it up so it's reasonably secure, so people from the outside can't get in and, you know, they know the kids are coming and going and all that?
Through, through, they have to. It's part of, it's part of, it's part of the, the school will meet all of the standards set forth by the Kentucky Department of Education for facilities. Now, the city schools have been working directly with the Malcolm Bryant Corporation to make sure that the space is built out to their standards. But the school area will only be accessible by school personnel. So the students will not have the ability to enter into the incubation space, and the business folks will not have the ability to enter into the school. They will be wholly separate entities from a security standpoint.
Okay. And the last question. The facility then, as you described for Commissioner Natalie, is nearing capacity. So if we suddenly have a ground swell of increased interest, where do we go? Where do you go from here?
That's a really good question. And then that's when we really explore, along with our advisory committee, about having a graduation policy. Maybe one that is a bit informal in terms of working with companies one-on-one and saying, it's really time for you to move on. But, but yes, that's when, if we see an outpouring of interest from particularly companies that are in the space that the building is built for and the technology or life sciences space, then we can certainly begin to explore that option. We still have one space that's, that's in the research wing that is currently unfinished, that's about three or four bays. So we could put two companies in that space pretty comfortably or one in a very large space if they, if they so chose. So we still are, have the ability to accommodate more, more folks. And there's an, and that's, that's about all we have at this point, quite frankly. But, but again, that's a good problem to have, to be that full just this, this, this soon into the project. These normally take five to six years to completely fill up, and we're already there. So, so we like where we're at at this point. It certainly allows for the cash, for the building from a cash flow standpoint to be in the, heading in a positive direction.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Hollison Technologies have been there from the beginning, pretty much?
That's correct.
And so how long can they stay there?
Well, again, we don't, we have a one-year lease with a six-month option to renew, and then you can renew for another six months ongoing. We recently entered into, with the, with the shuffle, I guess you could say, with the school moving in, we had to move a lot of tenants around. We had, for example, Adult Immunization Management... We had, for example, Adult Immunization Management, which is currently in a small space, needed to expand within the building and wanted to add more capacity. Hollison Technologies simultaneously wanted to decrease the amount of space that they rented. So we built the space out for them in the research wing that they recently moved to. And we're going to be moving Adult Immunization Management into their former space and the expansion space next door. So they have, a lot of these folks have been there since the beginning. We did enter into a new lease with Hollison for this particular new space that they decided to rent, and that's a one-year lease.
I'm just having a problem with, if it's an incubator and it's supposed to get you started, at some point, you're gone.
Correct.
So if they've been there all this time and they're growing...
We've had several companies that are in the building, Commissioner, that have been in the building for its entire lifespan. Many have said that, you know, they're in a steady growth pattern, and they all have plans to eventually graduate the facility at some point. But again, we try to address it on a company-by-company basis on what they need at that time because, as we've seen evidenced of, companies are at their most vulnerable when they're growing. Many companies have the capability to, you know, to get 100 sales out the door, but when they get an order for 1,000, it becomes a logistical issue. So we try to look at it on what companies need at a given point, how well is their capitalization, what are their, what's their ability to scale at that particular time, and then go from it that way. Now Hollison, for example, has been a company that has, was perfecting the technology, securing intellectual property on that technology, and is now in the process of where they have machines that are going out the door. So there could very well be a point in the future where they simply outgrow their capacity in the building. They've already moved some of it offsite, kept some of their, because they need, they still utilize our lab space. So I would say if there's a reason why they're still in the building is because they're still utilizing the laboratory space. But they have downsized their presence substantially since they've moved in the building. But that company in particular, and I don't say this lightly, has the potential to, in the coming years, be a highly valued company from a job standpoint and from a wealth creation standpoint. They could be a company that employs a lot of people in future years.
Joe, help me with the, what are the benefits of these companies being there? I mean, other than the obvious, it's good rent, but it would be the lab?
The laboratory space is certainly a strong benefit because, again, having to outfit your own laboratory with the same amount of space is a pretty substantial capital expense on the front end. It's several reasons. Laboratory space, there's proximity to university research. So for example, if we had a company that needed something tested, they have PhD faculty that are actually located in the building that can validate their research. So they have that connection. Simultaneously, there's, you know, the ability to operate in the environment where they can interact with other entrepreneurs. We find often that the culture of a building of this nature is very strong and that companies are often providing services to one another, but also advice, mentoring, and others, as well as they get access to staff and Kentucky Innovation Network resources. They have the reciprocity relationship with Nucleus. So there's a lot of benefits for a company beyond just rent. There's a whole culture of being in the building that we think companies benefit from.
Two other questions. Do we have a queue here? Are there people out there waiting to get in this facility?
We receive, we receive calls frequently. We show the space to interested parties. We don't have a waiting queue, per se, of people that are on a waiting list. You know, what we've done is, when we have someone interested, we try to show the space. We talk about the culture of the building, what, you talk about the lab space, kind of what the... And many times we have come and say, well, this isn't really my, I need more of a traditional office setting, but, you know... So it all depends on a case-by-case basis, but we don't have, we do not have a formal waiting list of companies that are wanting to get in the building.
Are we passive or active here? I mean, are you, is someone going out trying to seek out these entrepreneurs? Or are we just there if they show up? How do we approach?
We have always been very active in attempting to get the spaces rented and build up the capacity in the building for client companies. And we will always have that attitude. If there's a company that thinks that they can have a home in that building, that we want to work with them. I will say that with the, you know, previously, we had a substantial amount of available space with, when we were, when the lease agreement was for the entire building. So we had a lot more to play with at that point in time. With the Innovation Academy project, the amount of available space has decreased simply because we had tenants that were being displaced from that construction. All of the tenants have an option if they want to move into another space in the building, they have that option. So we were moving tenants from downstairs to upstairs to where we had limited capacity. Because our available space is located in the research wing in proximity to the laboratory space, the mission of that area is to have companies that are doing some form of scientific research. That would be a preferred type of company for that area. However, if we had an interested party, we would certainly be more than willing to start having those discussions.
Mayor Proten, do you have another question?
How many, how many different companies use the lab besides Holliston?
Holliston, KBP, Research Conchiers, WKU, four to five.
Four to five.
Show, six.
And the lab...
Almost half.
And the lab setting is worth about $2 million, is that what you said?
The equipment alone.
Equipment alone, so that's the capital that they would have to have. Okay. So that's very valuable to them.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
I just had a question. Were you talking about, Joe, about that you're actively going out to, you know, to market and that sort of thing? Are you talking about the Economic Development Corporation? Who does this?
So the question is, what is, what are we doing to help grow entrepreneurship in the community? To try, because ultimately, you know, there's a sequence of events that we like to see with people who are interested in starting a business. And eventually, part of that sequence of events is hopefully that the Center for Business and Research is a good home for them to grow. So there are a number of programs and efforts that we do throughout the year to help support that sequence of events, to make sure that there's a pipeline of people that are going through it. So within that sequence, for example, is the Emerging Venture Center, which is across the street. And in there, from eight to five every day, an entrepreneur has access to copier, coffee, and Wi-Fi, and as well as assistance from the Small Business Development Center, the Service Corps of Retired Executives, and the Kentucky Innovation Network. And that's what we call our pre-incubation area, a place where somebody can really sit down, work on their business plan, and hopefully perfect that. And when it's time to get to that point where they're like, you know what, I really need a place to do this now. It's great working out of your old space, but eventually I've got to have mine. That next space is going to be the Center for Business and Research. And so, you know, we don't do this in a way that you would, that you would say, market the airpark, for example. We do go out and tell people about the Center for Business and Research and that it's an asset we have in the community. And when we talk about the progressiveness of Owensboro, it's one of the things that we always talk about. But we don't market it as a site, per se, in the way that we do with large industrial marketing. It takes a very, it's a very different avenue of advertising, essentially. And so Joe works with people, really as young as elementary school students, to try to get them interested in entrepreneurship. And we started the Hot Chocolate Challenge last year, and that'll continue again this year during Global Entrepreneurship Week. But there are a number of activities that Joe does throughout the year to try to build up that pipeline of entrepreneurs. And as a matter of fact, this past year was ranked the number one performing office within the Kentucky Innovation Network just a few weeks ago.
Because when I was looking over your market, or your annual report for your Economic Development Corporation, it appears that just 11% of your entire budget is for marketing and recruiting.
No, that was about an 11% increase in our budget went to marketing and recruiting. We increased our marketing budget by 10 and 1/2% this year.
Let's see. The number I was looking at was, let's see, your budget, marketing recruitment expenses, $84,339?
Yeah, that's right. So you're looking, you're looking at that number, and that's correct from that perspective. So that, what that number doesn't include is all of the face-to-face marketing that I'm doing when I'm in other markets and things such as that.
Does it include travel expenses?
No.
No. But that is 11% of the total expenditures for...
Yeah, it is. And that was about a 10 and 1/2% increase.
It just seemed like a small number. The rest of it is, well, I think together with existing business support, that would be about 18% of your budget. The rest of it is salaries and operational expenses.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Anyone else? Joe, Madison, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parrish, I guess the next item, city project list, we will do by exception. Anyone on the, they have any questions of the staff on any of these projects?
I had a question about under the paving program.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, sorry. Page three. I just wanted to confirm the location. I don't have a problem with what you're doing. Kroger Alley, Park Plaza Drive, Old Hickory, Frost Avenue. If I recall, will that include work that as you're going through the alley and you come to... Will that include work on the street or just the alley? That's the question. For Kroger Alley, Park Plaza Drive, south to the end.
Mayor, I'd ask you to recognize our city engineer and let him respond to that.
I'll wait till he gets up there, so I can...
City engineer?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Washington Avenue is to be paved from Frederick to Frost, and we'll also repair the apron where the alley meets Washington Avenue. I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm trying in my mind, I think it's right. But the complaints we'd had were, or I had, were from folks at the Roosevelt House who, they come out in that street, it's across where Legends used to be. I hope I've got the right street. I think it's Washington. So it sounds like you're going to solve their problem. But they come out of the alley and they're actually on the street, and they're like wheelchairs, mobility issues. And I drove through it and looked at it, and it looked pretty bad. And there was a delay. And I know Bill and I had even talked about it, so if you're doing it, amen, but I just wanted to make sure it wasn't just the alley.
Yeah, Washington's the road that runs by Old Hickory.
Yeah.
And I believe that, my understanding was, is the alley where it meets Washington, that apron, that connection point is deteriorated, and that's what we're planning to repair with the paving of Washington.
And I saw markers there last night. There were, I don't know if it's ours, but they look like they were cones and things like that that had been set up. I don't know if that's part of that, have we started the project to where there'd be markers?
We've started doing some street repairs and storm-sur work, and the cones are there to, for that purpose.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Amen, that's what I say. Good job.
Anyone?
Let me ask you, you know, I was just looking at that Harstitch project and thinking, we have had a lot of rain here in this community this year. Have we had any drainage problems? It's just remarkable that I have had no feedback from anybody about...
I was going to ask Kevin to respond to that button.
Kevin?
Those projects aren't completed yet.
I know, I know. Have we had, you experienced any problems, drainage problems, in any Carter Road, you know, like we used to have major problems out there and...
We did have a problem in the Harsh neighborhood area. It was, I think it was about three weeks ago on a Sunday, we got, I think, over two inches in an hour's time, just a pretty extreme rain event. And we did get some flooding on those streets down around Hathaway, 19th Street. But, you know, the project is not done for one point. You know, there's still a second basin to dig. It's partially dug, but it's not complete. But, you know, I'll also say that the project is there to alleviate flooding. You know, there's no guarantee that it will never flood again. But I think that there have been significant improvements, but we did get some flooding, as I say, on that one event about three weeks ago.
What about Parrish Avenue? Anything? I know we've got that new basin there, so...
I have not seen any problems where the basin is on Parrish Avenue.
Okay.
I think there may have been some flooding down, you know, around Cedar Street, closer to Frederick, stuff like that, but nothing right there in there is a basin.
Good, okay. Anybody else? Any questions?
One quick.
Proten?
Yeah. I hate to beat a dead horse, but Gabe's Tower, people ask me every single day.
I want to be careful not to steal the contractor, the owner's thunder, but we have seen a date specific where the owner has contracted with someone to come and finish the gutting of the building, and that date is fairly soon. I just want to look at Keith. Have they sent out a press release on that yet, Keith?
No, not yet.
And I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards.
That's fine.
But I'd rather not publicly steal their thunder, if you don't mind.
Yeah, understand. Anyone else? Anything? All right, Commissioners, the next item is to consider a closed session under KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation, and G for discussion between a public agency and a representative of a business entity. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. Motion. Second. Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And I do not anticipate we'll come out with any action after the meeting, except to adjourn.